Okay. I think it's close enough to five o'clock, we can go ahead and get started. The reason we're here at this time right now is the city council discussion of emergency services. This is a work session. And so by its nature, this is an opportunity for staff to be able to address the council. And it's an open session thing. And so what we do is we publish that, yes, we've got this work session going. However, it is designed to be in exchange of information from staff going to the city council. And so typically, there won't be an opportunity for our audience to speak, but they are invited to listen and hear the things that the council is hearing. So with that, Amal, would you take it from here?
Yes, thank you. Basically, we will not be making a decision here today. This is a work session. My goal with this is to work on the dispatch services and how we bought this for that. Your honor, we're working on fiscal year 2026 budget. And there are so many ways we can approach this service provision. I'd like to have a discussion and sit tonight about it. And I would like to overlay what options do we have at city for this service? And explain to you where we are with everything. And I'll start with a little background of where we are. So agenda basically is going to be, we're going to talk about our approach to everything when it comes to service provision. Give a little background, billing history, we'll have to mention that to put things in perspective. Budget concerns and what options do we have at city? And if there's any alternative options. Our approach for all services that we provide at city is to have higher quality, affordable, sustainable for us as a community. That's the vision. It will continue to be the goal. We've been engaged, as staff, we've been engaged in trying to figure out a better funding structure for the emergency services provided at the county level. And basically, that's the case for all the services. We are for efficiency and effectiveness and sustainability from the long run. At the city, we're committed. We will always do our due diligence when it comes to evaluating the problem, the solution, balance our priorities because we are responsible for a whole lot. Public safety will be a top priority for us. It will continue to do that. But within that public safety, we have a couple of services we provide. Fiscal responsibility, we owe it to our taxpayers to do our best, do our due diligence, provide them the best value for the dollar. Would like to also for all services to always find the effective path forward. So this is just a little timeline to see how we dealt with the provision of this service and how its structure provided at a level. Historically, the county levied for the cost of the service for the whole county. In 2021, county disagreed with the budget that presented with the EMA and landlord proposal and refused to levy for the service. 2021 fiscal year, EMA, the broker, came to the city of Oskaloosa seeking assistance with the funding. City got into a one-year agreement. City agreed to pay $274,000 to support continuing the service provision, but had stipulations for repayments. At that time, EMA was in litigation with the county. 2022, as the fiscal year, the agreement ended. Fired 22. Same fiscal year, the city and the county jointly with a review for the service. Highlight or bottom line, what we learned that there is a need for improvement in the administration, basically the structure. Through 23, the city continued to receive escalating requests for payment for the service. 2024, the city negotiated an agreement with the county for 50/50 share of the cost with a solution, trying to figure out the funding. Bear in mind, the city did not know that in the budget because it was levied for by the county. 2024, county puts that agreement on hold. Basically, it's a funding discussion online agreement. It was ready to go, to be effective July 1st, 2024, which is the fiscal year we are in. This is just a chart to show where we've been from that $274,000 that was supposed to be paid back to the city to where we sit today or what happened with it. Budget. From a administration standpoint, there are budget concerns. Why? Because it was not built strictly in the budget for the city, where the city paid it out of reserve. Timing is not great because we are currently under assessment limitation. And also, our levy capacity going away. Basically, for fiscal year 2025, we grew, we grew 3.6%. You would think our revenue would grow with a percent. Inflation, 3.4%, that's the Midwest Consumer Price Index. Based on the changes in property tax law, we're capped at 1.6%. That's all general fund. What does it mean? If we have to make room for over half a million, which in the general fund, something will have to give. Basically, everybody knows last year we made some cuts. We've cut animal shelter budget, cemetery budget. If we have to make room for over half a million, we'll have to cut some budgets. The biggest budget we have in general fund is police and fire. We have other small budgets within the general fund. Those are tree removals, this is also a safety hazard. Dead trees, we move those after a storm, we do the cleanup on that. We have economic development, we have parks we maintain, that's also a general fund. And then we have the code enforcement. So looking at options with the goal sustainability, efficiency, feasibility. Have a couple of options, so we'll go over those here quick. We have number one, the option of just continue to pay for emergency services over half a million with escalator every year. That would be 3% basis. Two, wait for the county, find that 50/50 share that includes administration. Why is this significant? Basically, we'll be able to maintain the same service we have today, but we will have a better way of funding because in the agreement that we will hire dispatchers. So we have a way of grading away from the general fund into benefit levy. That will help the general fund some point. And that's why when we practice cars, we pursue that. Number three is the county agreeing to levy for the service the way they did in the past, and all of this goes away. Corps negotiates a different allocation formula because the existing, of course, they cannot afford. That would depend on every other entity agreeing to pay more or the county paying more. Five, we can seek to the idea of a regional center. I believe the county is interested and been pursuing that idea. So far, nothing really, it's just an idea. Six, contracting out, manager of cost, less cost. Not going to be great, it would be less, at least $100,000 less than what we are offering, trying to fit in our budget here. In summary, basically, those are the options. Do we wait and continue with the existing setup, knowing something will have to give? Or do we go ahead and try our way to conquer this service out? I have a lot to think about, but the direction will impact the budget. We would like to have this discussion ahead of the budget so we figure out what to do. For your information, the 50/50 share we already budgeted for in fiscal year. The county, do you want to go through here?
That's fiscal '25.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
We'll just start July 1st of this year. County, do you want to go through?
So that was an emergency type of budgeting. In other words, we don't know an agreement, so we're...
Yeah, did it go through? Because the county...
It's being thoughtful.
Yes. We were ready to go July 1st, except the county didn't want to have the discussion.
Do you remember what the cost, the 50/50 cost was on our end, top of your head?
It would be 400 something, but that 400 is not all general fund. Some of it is in benefits.
Okay. And for item, wrong page. Yeah, the contract out one, that was about 400,000, right?
350 to 400,000, so it would be 100 or 150,000 less than what we're expected to pay. Contracting out, just working my work, my field contracted out and get what you pay for. So it's 100,000 less now, is it going to be 100,000 more the year after that? So...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do...
My job is to just explain to you what's going on and also explain that we'll have to make decisions when it comes to, when it budget time, because we'll have to make cuts. We can make that half a million in the budget, but we'll have to drastically cut police and fire.
Did the county provide any reasoning why they wouldn't come to the table to discuss the 50/50 split?
Yeah, that was my question too.
We were ready to go, we were negotiating the details of the agreements last minute. They said they couldn't make it through this budget.
Well, one thing I can add too, I've been campaigning in the five county region. Mahaska County is not alone. All of five counties have been going to, are having a lot of difficulties with this. And at some point, we're going to have to set up some types of regional systems, but we're not there yet. Right now, it's a county by county. Ninety-nine counties have to have that. And so we're feeling very personal here in Mahaska, but all of the counties are going through this. It's a very expensive but very needed service. I grew up in a park, we had the police radio on all the time. My mom is trained as a dispatcher, so I get the need. I'm one who called 911 in that. I'd like to look at some other counties. Henry County put it to a vote, and it was extremely positive. They said it's a necessary service, it costs money, all of us need it. You never know when you're going to have to make that phone call and that. And it takes money, and they put it to a vote in September. And the increased levy won by 92%. It was completely transparent, and everybody felt really positive about that. There's a lot of details that they went into. But instead of playing this blame game and that, I really liked what Henry County did. It was incredibly straightforward. This is a community need, it's going to cost money. Do we raise taxes? And they put it to a vote. And 92%.
We want to if we could, except we can't, yeah, because it's part of general fund.
Right.
We're capped. Oskaloosa exceeded its $8.10 levy a long time ago. We've been tapping into emergency levy.
Yeah, we can't, the county.
27 cents, and that is also going away completely. We just lost over half of that levy. We will continue to lose every year. 29 is 100% gone, but the county can do it. County today can make all of this go away by agreeing to, because they could levy down.
And in Henry County, they put it to a vote. You know, let's see what the people say about this. You know, it's the taxpayer's money, do they want to spend it or not? And like I said, it was extremely, extremely positive. And they did a county-wide informational service about emergency services and what that costs. And like I said, it passed 92%. That's incredible, you know? And everybody's kind of pleased with it. You know, they know exactly what the rate increase is and why.
I have a question. So knowing that that's been done before, the county has levied for it and it's taken care of, and then they went away from it, have they indicated any reasons why they wouldn't go back to doing that?
They disagreed with the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, they always presented the budget. Cheryl C I P needs to tell us. I'm new, but she's been here for a while, but this agreement was about the budget.
Amal, the proposal that you were working on with the county, whereas the 50/50 split, that didn't necessarily save the city any money.
No.
Cash, it did not significantly reduce our cash outflow, but what it allowed us, would allow us to do is to actually levy for it. Whereas under the current situation, we've got, that's an expense that's got to be in our 810, which is the 810 is $8.10 per thousand of taxable value. And there are only certain things that can be included in that, and we're capped. And that's where, when we talk about a lot of these other services, we, I'd love to levy for it, but we're not allowed to. And so that's where, in my experience, the six years I've been on council, there's been a number of expenses that have gone out of the general fund and covered by franchise fees and covered by whatever the other... I mean, there's so many different funds and levies that you can't. But there's, but there's a point where those options become tapped out. And so I just wanted to clarify that that was the big advantage from a city standpoint, is that that expense comes out of that general fund levy.
Yep. So basically, the city would hire all dispatchers to put them on benefits levy. That helps, we'll have the salaries in the general fund, but that helps with reducing that impact on the general fund. Because it's like a bucket full of water, you put anything, water will have to come. Something will have to come out of that general fund. And at this point, I've looked at the numbers, I've looked at the budget, it's going to be police and fire. We'll have to cut. We, this year, we delayed everything. Purchases, cars, C I P delayed, nothing is moving because of the restriction on that levy that's happening.
And what would be the legality if we have a city service, but we're providing for the county? You know, you see what I mean? Because when the county provides, Oskaloosa is well within the county. And that argument has been going on.
We've been sustaining.
Right, right.
We've been sustaining for a couple of years. It's still like the community thinks Oskaloosa is not doing its best and it could do more.
Right.
We would if we can, because we are at a point we can subsidize anymore.
So you mentioned that we could provide basically our own 911 service, the city?
Be good, but that's going to cost.
Right. And then there should be funding from like external funding to help pay for some of that too, right?
The equipment and everything is C I P, we can levy for that.
Right.
Through that service.
Right.
But we'll have to hire people. We're not going to hire nine dispatchers, we'll have two, three.
I'm just wondering if someone from Barnes City needs help, you know?
And that's the struggle, that's why this is not easy. It's a really hard decision.
Right. Because I got a little tired of the numbers game. Well, Oskaloosa has more people. I also live two blocks from the hospital. I could run there if I need to, I might be running very fast maybe. But somebody in New Sharon or Barnes City or Rose Hill, that's a different expense as well as the country, you know? So that, that leads you into a whole other level of issues.
What I appreciated about the consult review and study that you did, was that a year ago, year and a half ago?
Yeah.
Time flies.
Two years even.
What I looked forward to the most in that study was, I wanted to know, how did our EMA 911 services compare to other communities our same size? My goal had nothing to do with the director, with the staffing. I just wanted to know if we are going to be paying a half million dollars a year for this, what am I giving as the right, the right size, the right services? What I took from the conclusion of that study was that, as Amal said in her, showed in her presentation, there were some administrative changes suggested. But what I took from was that it was the right size, the right services, which tells me that providing those services, it's going to cost, overall, it's going to cost about a million dollars to provide the services to Mahaska County. I don't, I don't dispute the cost itself, and it is absolutely a service that we as a community need. We've needed it in the past, we need it now, we need it ongoing. And I don't think there's anybody at this table in this room who would disagree with that statement. My concern is, do we pay for it? And I don't even care what the right way is. What I want to know is, what's the most efficient way to provide the high-quality service to our community? And that's why I like studies, why I like exploring options. I would want, I think all of us here again, would love to see this continue to be a Mahaska County service. But through exploration, if there is a way, as Amal said, that there are significant savings, I think that we as a council, I as a councilperson, first, per second, we're in Oskaloosa, not doing my fiduciary responsibility as a councilman by understanding how taxpayer... The other, as I think about funding, two things. Number one, assuming if you went out and explored other options with a third party, with another community partnering, sharing, shared costs. If you could save $100,000, that's 20% of what we're, of what we're spending already. We've got approximately a six-plus million-dollar general fund budget, and we're talking about 8% of our general fund budget. And that 810 goes to provide 911 service. If I could cut that by 100,000, what could I do for that? And we talked about the budget issues and how, due to state regulations and restrictions, we could only increase our general fund revenues by 1.6% last year. We did what I thought was right for our city team, police and fire included. Everybody got a 5% raise, okay?
Because of the union contract.
Because the union contract was... Union contract was 5% of this, but then staff got it as well. And that's the right thing to do. Our personnel costs are 75% of the budget. Do the math. That's a 3%, 3-plus percent increase of our budget by doing what was right for our team, but we were restricted to 1.5% for us in our revenues. So what could I do with that 100,000? Could I better pay our, our public safety officials? Could I, what quality, could I continue to hire quality city staff if I had that? Could I fix more roads? Could I fix more sewers? Could I do all those things if I had that $100,000? I as a councilman want to understand what that, what that looks like. The other piece, some of the questions talked about funding and the county, and I don't have the answer to it, but I think through the coming weeks, we're going to find out, is even with the proposal that was worked through and then was subsequently tabled by the county as a 50/50 split. And I believe that's based on whether it's population, volume of calls, the numbers kept coming back to 50%. The question I have is, what portion of the cost is this, is the county paying to provide that service to the citizens of Oskaloosa? I don't know the answer to that question. I think it's a question that should be answered. Last I checked, the city is in Mahaska County. And so why am I paying 100% for a community service that is provided here when the county is also a part of that? I don't know. I don't know what the right answer is, but it's something I think needs to be considered in our discussions.
And that kind of talent you don't have. I've shown you during budget work session how that difference between revenue and expenditure. And we closed that gap, we presented a balanced budget. If we continue, we'll have to dip in reserve again for a year, two, three. It's not sustainable, you're going to spend all your reserve and then what? So maybe you can sustain it for three years, but after that, it's not a good idea. So that's you spending money that you don't have.
Option number five was one for the county, set up a regional center.
Yeah.
And so, and I remember the comment was, it's something, nothing we could do in the short term. But what does that look like? Would that be multiple counties, you know, joining into a regional approach? Say five, eight, nine, whatever counties at a time?
So basically, seeking economies of scale. If we got three entities, that's still a little decent setup. But it has to be set right. It has to be managed right, and we have to have willing partners. I believe the county was talking to Waukanoa, Kewaak, that's not interested, Waukanoa, City of Tamaulipas. But I don't know where, whether there is a willingness for it, but it makes sense because we're not alone, everybody's struggling with it.
Right, right. And no one's willing to take that first step in getting a true partnership. The technology has changed, so we could do better regional systems. The technology has changed. We're not in a horse and buggy where we need to be 100 miles from the county seat, you know? But it's going to require something from the state level in that we get functional, regional entities and getting that kind of cooperation. But that's going to be, you know, hopefully in the near future, but...
And we'll leave it on entities to take the lead. Who's that going to be? Is it the county? I don't know.
Right.
Someone would be in the lead.
Right.
So in informal conversations with the county supervisor, has there been any appetite for them to do the 100% funding?
I don't think so. We talked about it a long time ago during one of those discussions we had about the whole funding environment one. I don't think they were interested in levying. But they were excited about the share.
Of course.
Last minute, 50/50 share, last minute, they changed and hired.
My neighbor paid half my mortgage, I'd be happy too.
I guess we're talking about what we can do. But honestly, the county matters too. What is the county proposing on doing?
Yeah, exactly.
Like I said, you're thinking of, you know, like the whole brand, regional leadership. So it's like, what can we do? What can I do? But I mean, we're not singular in this either, so I mean...
We're not interested in pursuing number five?
I mean, no one, that's going to take a while.
That's going to...
But the problem is, what are we going to do, City of Oskaloosa? We have to figure out something. People, people out there, they think we're not doing enough. We've been engaged since 2021. We've been engaged since twenty-twenty-one, trying to figure things out. But we don't have much control, we don't have control.
And the timing of this, I think, is very relevant and important as well, because we go into, Amal and Amy and the whole city teams currently working on budgets for fiscal year twenty-six, and it's only the, the fourth of November of twenty-twenty-four. And we have our budget review and, and workshop, work session in Jan, mid to late January. And that's where we talk about what we're funding, what we're not, so that we can meet the timelines required to certify the budget. And, and that's why we've got to, as, as Amal said, five hundred thousand a year in the general fund is not, is, is not sustainable. We're going to have to cut somewhere. Where that is, I don't know. That's what we pay Amy for. But again, that's why it's important to talk about this now.
And I think that's important too. Have we looked at their audit and what money they have? I mean, it's just like in life, some people are cheap and some people will pay what they need to. You know, we don't know what's what until we've, and that's public record.
Where do they get this five hundred thousand from? I mean, just like.
Uh, I'll give you based on the number of people. But we all know that it's not a variable cost, there is an overhead. There's the cost, we need to hire dispatchers, depending on whether we're taking a call or not. People need to be there twenty-four seven.
Right, no, I get that.
So it, it, it should be a fixed cost and kinda like a buying coverage for interest.
Right.
You hope you don't need it.
Right.
Is there any chance we can have a conversation to go into a joint?
Yeah, the, the best is going to be the best idea is for the county to levy, because I don't think the community is refusing to pay for it.
No, no, I know.
Just trying to figure out how we pay for it. The county can.
Right.
We're limited in what we can do.
And that's why I like what Henry County did. They said the county was hesitant to do that. They don't wanna be perceived as raising taxes and that. And so they said, fine, we'll put it to a community vote and see if the community values this. And they did that, and they did a lot of educating, uh, and that it was, it was very extensive, uh, in that. And they put it to a vote, and that way, everybody saved face. The county wasn't randomly raising taxes and people screaming about that. It was a very educated, transparent decision. We need to do this. And I thought that was a very adult response. I was so impressed when I was there in September, the signs that were out, people talking about it. They were being very positive with each other, because you're a community and you never know. Last time we had this conversation, I had to call nine-one-one because a Doberman attacked me and it killed me. I'm screaming in front of the hospital and nobody's around to help. You know, thank goodness I had nine-one-one and then the new police officer. Um, so you just never know, it's like insurance. You hope you never need it. But when lifeline can take you out, out, you know, next to house, anyway.
We can try that and have a conversation about levying.
Yeah.
Kind of level, but if that fails, me as an administrator, I would be proposing contracting out, because we have to make a rational decision. We can be making emotions. If we cannot afford it, we cannot afford it, something will have to change.
I have a question.
I, 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 I will, I don't think I will ever recommend cutting police or fire.
No, 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 no.
So we'll have to figure something out. And I don't like unbalanced budgeting, I will not run my budget in deficit. I'll tell you that.
Yeah.
But we can't, yeah.
Again, that may be naive, like probably on the answer four, but this was previously levy for, and it's not being spent or levy for anymore. Where is that money?
Talking about the county.
The county, sorry, from the county. The county asked, I mean, like, it was levy for, I mean, assuming they're probably still levying for it, where is that money? Or am I, you know, or is that a naive thought about?
No, I think.
No, it's just, it's a reasonable thing. My guess would be that.
I mean, because they receive funded from surcharges, right?
The surcharge is small portion.
Well, it's a small, but still.
Yeah, it's still, it's still possible, like a hundred, hundred fifty. It used to be two hundred thousand and then got reduced.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, we would do this as a union, does the college have the money or not? And our union would look at their audited books and see, you know, they're a public entity. They're not, it's there if somebody examines it, um, and can ask some serious questions. I'd like some numbers, because I don't wanna feel naive, you know? What's the truth here?
I think that's a fair question to the county if you were to meet, because there was some question about that. Back in twenty-one, when the city, they came to the city asking the city for money, kind of at that eleventh hour, I think it was August, and we had a budget for it at that time, and the city kicked in then. But there was a lot of question, and I don't think there were answers as far as was that levy that year or not.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I remember looking at their monthly budget in twenty-twenty when I was running for county supervisor. It was kinda interesting what was being spent. I have no idea four years now, what, what's on that.
So as a city, had we not stepped in and provided the funding that we have in the recent years, what would have happened? Do we even know?
Yeah.
Do the citizens know that we have been helped funding this when?
We had no contract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We didn't have a contract, but we understand the value of the service and, and the community would be doing that. But it would be dismantled. We sustained it this far.
I, I, I'd like, I just want to, I'd like to see if we can, we can, I can all check with you, and I'd like to see if we can, if we could reach out and.
And if that doesn't work out, then we go to option six.
So then later, I'd like to see, but I mean, obviously, this is a need for, for, for Mahaska County. It's been ran by Mahaska County. It runs like clock, there's the fantastic, obviously, we've all had to use their services. Like, I'm out with these guys all the time. Um, I'm contracting, and I, and I'm, I'm union, I've been union thirty-five years. Contracting is contracting, you get what you paid for.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I, I, that's just me, because I've, I've, I've been union my whole life. But, um, I think this is a service that, um, well, obviously, we have to have it. I, I'd like to, I'd like to see some numbers, I agree. I'd like to see, see some numbers and some, I'd like to see some, you know, not, I, I obviously know where Oscalu, but how much you, I mean, are we, are we, are we expecting our rural communities to, I mean, what? I'd just like to see, I'd just like to see the facts and, um, just knowing, checking, seeing. And Mark, I, I, I would hope that they would be able to sit down with us. If that doesn't work, I understand we have to make a decision, but, um, I, I'd like to just, I'd like to at least give it, give a, give a honest try to do that.
That's fair.
Right. Because honestly, it's an old English phrase, you could be penny wise and pound foolish. And if they think they're saving a few pennies there, but if I hadn't had nine-one-one service and I got killed, you can bet my family would be suing. And that would cost quite a bit, you know? So there's unintended costs in not providing services. And so we'd be foolish to not have a quality service. We just, fiscally, would be foolish.
So we'll go ahead and do option three, and then if that doesn't pan out, go to option six?
Yeah, I mean, the idea is to set up a meeting first, and of course, we're not making any decisions here.
Set up a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we, we've been trying for some time to set up a meeting with those guys. Uh, so maybe there's a little more to see, um, can always hope.
Sooner the better.
Yeah. Any other questions from council? Okay, anything else from staff? Okay, very good. Thank you, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and close the, uh, the work session.